From the Board of Education, colleagues, if you turn to page 464 in your budget book, you will have the information for Metro Nashville Public Schools. And thank you all so much for being here. Uh, thank you to our school board members as well as our MNPS faculty and staff. And I see lots of red shirts in the back, so thank you uh for everyone here that is supporting schools. I'm assuming probably some MNEA members and teachers. Uh, so thank you all for uh being here. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Battle if you could introduce yourself and you all may begin.
Thank you so much Chair, thank you to the Council for having us here this evening. Um, so good to be with you all on the very last day of the 24-25 school year. Um, great day. Um, so um, this evening, uh, you'll hear from our Budget Chair, Dr. Berthina Navam McKenney. She will um open up for, she will turn it over to myself, um Adrian Battle, Superintendent or Director of Schools for Nashville Public Schools. And then you'll also hear from our Chief Financial Officer, Chief um Jorge Robles.
Good afternoon, uh Budget Chair Porterfield and members of the Metro Council. Thank you for having us here today. Um, and I reiterate, happy last day of school, everyone. Um, it's always great to see so many faces um here. Before I begin, I want to congratulate um Councilmember Porterfield, Councilmember Cash, um, and our very own Board Member TK Fain on the graduation of their young people from high school. So congratulations y'all. Thank you for trusting Metro Nashville Public Schools um for the care and education of your children. We really appreciate it. Um, I have the honor of serving as the Budget Chair um and the Vice Chair of the School Board. Joining me today um is our Board Chair Frida Player over here. Um, we also have Robert Taylor, uh District One, Rachel Anne Elrod, District Two, Zach Young, District Three, Erin O'Hara Block, District Eight. Um, and arriving in traffic will be Abigail Tyler, District Nine as well. Along, um, as you've already uh introduced, our phenomenal Board Director of Schools, Dr. Adrian Battle and her team. Uh, before I turn it over to introduce her and her team and let them begin the presentation, I do want to take a point of privilege to thank Mayor O'Connell for his unwavering commitment to Metro Nashville Public Schools, both as a parent and the mayor of our great city. Uh, we are greatly appreciative um and super thankful for the most historic investment uh that he announced in his budget at the state of Metro. Um, this uh investment will allow us to continue the work of providing a high-quality education to students uh which prepares them for post-secondary success in college and/or career as well as providing the necessary wraparound supports, um, including health and safety. Um, I would also like to thank members of the Metro Council for your unwavering support and investments in our schools. Over the years, uh through our partnership, uh, these funds has helped us invest in strategic and innovative strategies proven to aid us in achieving the historic growth in academic achievement, graduation rates, um, and access to post-secondary opportunities as well as the wraparound supports and health and safety for our students, teachers, and staff over the years. Um, this would not have been possible without our close relationship and our shared commitment, responsibility, and support of our schools. So on behalf of the Board, we would like to personally thank all of you for your continuous support of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Um, while this budget season has been extraordinary, um, with lots of unknowns, challenges, and changes, um, I would take a point of privilege to thank Dr. Battle and her team for all of your hard work, um, in general, leading our district, um, but specifically on this budget in spite of the challenges that we have faced to get us prepared for today. Um, I will now turn it over to Dr. Battle and her team, uh, for her to introduce her team and the proposed budget for FY '26. Thank you.
Thank you so much um to our Budget Chair, um, as well as the rest of our school board for being here and their support, um, as we move through this process this year. Um, I'm also um honored to have several of our um cabinet members here, um, in the audience as well as my fellow colleagues who are in the audience as well, um, who are just leading such phenomenal work on behalf of the nearly 82,000 students we serve, um, in Nashville Public Schools. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump in, um, and as always, and to really springboard off of what was already shared. Um, this has been a really um huge year for Nashville Public Schools. We have realized lots of positive um outcomes on behalf of our students, many of which um we've been striving for, for a long time. So I just want to start with kind of celebrating the return on investment, um, ways in which we have been investing that have really been moving the needle in the right direction for our young people. Um, first and foremost, we are very proud, extremely proud of um our school district um receiving a Level Five, um, TIVAS status from the Department of Education for the third year in a row. That's the first time um in our recorded history that we've achieved that. Um, so very significant. That means that our students, based upon their projections, have exceeded um the growth um compared to their peers um across the state of Tennessee. That's the highest rating that a school district can receive, a Level Five. We're also um been designated as an advancing district, um, that is um almost at the top. This is second from the top category. Um, so we're extremely proud of the continued progress, both with growth and proficiency, on behalf of our young people. Uh, we are celebrating 21 reward schools. That is, um, 40% of them are multi-year repeaters. I'm extremely proud um of that. And as well as 75% of our schools across our district that are meeting, exceeding, or significantly exceeding their growth expectations. So for growth, three is what's expected um over the course of a year. So a five means that there again is significant evidence um that our students are growing at a faster rate compared to their peers. We're also extremely proud um of um recording our highest graduation rate in the record, um, this on record for um Metro Nashville Public Schools. We had a pretty significant increase um this past year of almost nearly 5% um reaching 85.7% graduation rate. So really, really um proud of our students because our goal is not only for our students to walk across the stage and receive a diploma, it's really about making sure that they have the skills, the knowledge, um, and the access they need um as they move into their post-secondary opportunities. So extremely proud um of our students and our educators and our families. That's good, I can click. There we go. All right, sorry about that. Um, so again, um, for the 2024 school year, um, MNPS increased proficiency um across every grade level and in every content area. So we usually are talking about two different measures. There's growth, uh, which historically we've done pretty well at. And then there's the proficiency and the success rate. Um, so for the last school year, um, again, every grade level, every tested grade level, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and across every content area, ELA, math, history, and science, our students improve their proficiency rate. So um, pretty historic and significant. You can see the level of cumulative uh progress for our achievement scores over the last three years. Um, almost across every test category, nearly every test category, particularly for our grades three through eight, um, we have increased proficiency by double digits. Um, and in a similar fashion, um, for, um, and of course exams for our high school students. Um, so again, pretty historic. Typically what you see um in a landscape where there's a heightened um focus um on literacy and retention rates and things of that nature, laws that are impacting us um across the state, you see a uh, a huge increase in one area and you see other areas really take a dip. And so this really speaks to the quality of our educators and all the program and the structures and supports we have in place for all um content areas and grade levels to continue to move forward in a positive manner. Again, um, for our 2024 graduation rate, MNPS has the highest graduation rate on record of 85.7%. Um, a goal of our, our district and our city for many, many years to continue to improve upon um that increase. Um, from 2023 to 24, 4.5% increase. And then um from 21 to 2024, we've had another 3.9%. So what I just shared with you, both in growth and achievement, are measures that we receive locally. So that's either based upon kind of predictor information we receive from our local assessments. Um, and more specifically with TIVAS and TCAP um data results, that comes from the Tennessee Department of Education. So we had a pretty good idea um coming into this school year how we were situated compared to other districts across the state of Tennessee. Uh, what has been really significant is over the last few years, uh, we've had some additional data that has been collected and reported out from the Education Recovery Scorecard, um, from professors at Harvard and Stanford University, um, the CIPR Group. And they've been really studying how districts have responded post-COVID, post the pandemic. Um, and so we're extremely uh proud of the progress that we've made. In this study, they um were able to dig into data um for over 8,000 districts across the country. Um, so very significant um amount of data that they were able to pull, leveraging NAEP scores and other um state assessments um to determine how um school districts compared to one another with regard to their rebound since the distractions caused um by the pandemic. And you'll see here for math, MNPS significantly outpaced the state's growth rate and on average improved by more than 67% of a grade level from 22 to 24. And then for reading, MNPS surpassed the state's reading score gains and rebounded by almost a quarter, um, 24% of a grade level from 22 to 24. So what that means is our students are not only making a year's worth of growth, they're exceeding that um since the pandemic. And the major headline here is that of the 100 largest urban school districts, um, MNPS ranked fourth in math and ninth in reading for post-pandemic recovery and was one of five districts to show up in the top 10 list for both subject areas. But we were the only school district to make both lists two years in a row. So that just speaks to the sustained um continued improvement um for our students um on behalf of all the partnerships with our stakeholders um for the last several years. So really proud that both here locally and um in a national perspective, um, MNPS is continuing to outpace um what is happening for growth um across the country. And so I say all that to say thank you to you because we know we don't do this work alone. We believe in, in powerful partnerships, um, and we know through our school board, their advocacy and their strategic priorities. And in um combination um with the mayor and the Metro Council, we've been able to sustain many of those strategies, those priorities that we know because we've evaluated them are having significant impact on students across the board and across our district um moving in a positive direction. So um, thank you for your continued partnership. Um, I know I've had an opportunity to sit before you for many years now. Um, and we've always had um a level of commitment and investment um to keep all of our students in our schools, um, again, rolling in the same direction, but in, in lots of ways, leading the nation. So that takes us to our board-approved FY '26 budget priorities. Um, what you'll see here on your left um were the FY '25 budget priorities um that were approved by our school board. And on the right, you see our FY '26 budget priorities. Um, I'll read them, they're not in any particular order, they are just the priorities of the board. Um, our continuity of operations um is a priority for our school board that is simply um all of the required and inflationary costs that are required to operate at the same level from this year into next year. Um, the next priority is continuing strategic investments. These are primarily um strategies that were invested in through our ESER budget. As we know, it was non-recurring, um, and so we have, those funds have sunsetted. They sunset as of um September of '24. We have some more kind of context and outlook with regards um to that coming up. Um, the next one is strategic employee compensation. Uh, we believe in our educators and we know our ability to retain um and attract high-quality educators um both locally and across the country is of value. Um, and so we want to make sure that we are supporting our educators so that they can continue to perform at the high levels that they are, but they can also live in the city in which they are pouring ants to our 82,000 students. So we want to support our employees to make sure that they are compensated in a manner um that they also can live and thrive here in Nashville. And then the last priority, um, again, not in any ranking order, was around comprehensive safety and security planning. We want to make sure that our multi-layered um system um for safety and security continues to be a priority. We will talk in just a few moments about some of the investments we've already made um and, and what those plans look like with those investments that will be needed in the future to continue to build upon that. So that moves us um again into just going deeper um around our budget priorities. Um, you'll see here that uh we started with our FY '25 operating budget. Um, so we have really scrubbed and digged into and evaluated um much about that, those investments around um, again, us meeting our goals as a school district. We're very proud to have significant partnerships, both with Vanderbilt University um as well as other universities and partners um who've been able to be kind of external to the district and really digging in to help us understand um both in short-term investments and long-term investments, um, what we're seeing um for our students and their progress. Um, beside that, you'll see our continuity of operations. We've talked about, um, a little bit about what that is, the inflationary and contractual rate increases to be expected. Um, that's typically a part of uh most contracts and services that we need in order to operate. Um, you'll see exceptional education and English learner student supports. Um, we've had an increase um in the percentage of students that we're, that we are honored to serve who have exceptional needs. Um, our textbook adoption, um, for several years now, um, it has been a priority of the Board to continue to adopt um high-quality instructional materials. It's a process that's led by our educators, um, by reviewing those materials. And we fully adopt them both from the student's perspective as well as the educator perspective with all of the professional learning um that is necessary in order to begin to implement with a high level of integrity. And then you also see um our step increases. Our step increases are a part of our continuity of operations to be expected for every employee um of Nashville Public Schools. Um, next I'll move to the ESER bridge in our operating budget. Um, we've talked um about this for the last several years around what we were leveraging our ESER funds um for. So I just want to highlight some of the key investments um that have been, first in our, our ESER budget. Um, you all worked collaboratively with us and approved us the opportunity to move those budgets last year into a bridge fund for one year. Of course, non-refunding, non-recurring, leveraging our fund balance. Um, and so some of those key investments are around college and career readiness supports and our university um MNPS partnership, which I'm extremely proud to announce. We have um officially partnered with every local college and university to provide um a set number, um, except for in one case, um, that is unlimited number of full-ride four-year scholarships for our Nashville Public School students. So we are sending a significant number of students to our local colleges and universities, um, and they will be able to do, be able to complete their degrees debt-free. So really, I'm proud of that investment. We're also extremely proud because now we are home to four early colleges here um in Nashville Public Schools. The national model is that those um colleges typically exist on um the campus of a community college. Uh, we have partnered uh with our local um community college to expand access to our schools so that students don't have a barrier around transportation and access um when they have um the desire and the aspirations um to complete their dual enrollment courses. Um, so we're so proud of the work that's happening at early college, high school. But also this year, we had our first graduating um cohort from White Creek High School. We had 22 students um who graduated um first with their associate's degree and then their high school diploma. So really proud um of their accomplishments as well. And as mentioned, um, we now have four early college on the campus of Nashville State. Um, we have an early college at White Creek High School, an early college at Kane Ridge High School, and an early college at Glencliff High School. Um, so more to come around those cohorts of students who are able to accomplish that. Um, the ESER bridge in our operating budget also includes expanded mental health and, and social-emotional learning supports. Um, we've talked about the height need around meeting the uh mental health um needs of our students. So we have expanded and plan to continue to invest in the supports there. Uh, we also are planning to continue our efforts around our community achieve sites. Um, that is a larger umbrella that um we lead here in Nashville um Public Schools. We have lots of strong data points around community achieve sites and their ability um to really accelerate outcomes um for students. It's really about four pillars in the partnership um across all of our stakeholders. Um, our scholars portfolio is a part of this. This includes um our promising scholars, which um will be kicking up in about a week. Uh, we are set to serve over 13,000 students for the month of June um in Nashville Public Schools. Um, so that's the summer. We, it is also um the portfolio where our accelerating scholars work. That is our high dosage, gold standard, high-impact tutoring program um that's available to our students. We exceed um what is kind of nationally agreed upon of serving about 10% of your students. We far exceed um that 10%, we're really proud of that. And it's also home to our enriching scholars program, which is kind of our um extended weekend enriching opportunities um for our students um who are in need. So all three of those um programs we are um proposing, we continue to invest in um for FY '26 budget. It also includes our safety ambassadors um in our elementary schools as we look to expand um our SRO program um in the next few years, working collaboratively with, with MNPD. Um, and it also includes our SBB school determinate. So we are um continuing to um kind of spiral funds to our schools based upon the unique needs of the students that they serve. So we are a student-based budgeting district, but it gives us an opportunity to really be intensive um around the supports um where they have been identified. And we believe our school teams, our teachers, our principals are closest to our students. And so it gives them additional capacity um to make those informed decisions. Um, in addition to that, we'll move to our strategic employee compensation um that, which includes our salaries, salary step increases, thank you, um, as well as our COLA um increases, um, our certificated and support pension, and our certificated and support health insurance. So both compensation and benefits are a part of our strategic compensation um plan. Um, I'll go back a few years. Again, we're very thankful for our partnership um with you. We were able to do a, a pay analysis a few years ago, first for our certificated staff, our support staff, our administrators, and other leaders within um our school district. So we want to continue the momentum um of us um being at the top with regards to the compensation that our educators receive here in Nashville Public Schools. And then we um have also layered in our safety and security priorities and investments. And these are all additional safety and security measures. Um, particularly um in this budget, we have implemented um our weapons detection systems in all of our high schools. And so is the continued um investment, recurring investment that is needed. Um, there, we have bid out a full plan of what that will look like, um, both for middle and high school um as well, not currently included. Um, and the budget we'll walk through in a few minutes, um, just because there's limited funding. But also, we wanted to make sure that we could articulate what it would, what it would take in investment if we were um to move in that direction. Um, like my colleagues across um the city, we, and working closely with the Board, we've also identified other aspirational budgets. So what we've gone through on this slide are truly programs, structures, FTEs that already exist in Nashville Public Schools. There is not anything new um per se um in our FY '25-26 budget priorities. So we're, um, this is really a budget where we've had to make some tough decisions, but we're really excited about the decisions we were able to make um to continue um many of those investments as we move into the next, next budget cycle. On the aspirational budget piece, these are investment opportunities. Um, we like to be extremely clear around um the cost of COLAs within our organization. And we do that, um, provide that in 1% increments. Um, you'll see a number of investments you've heard for a few years, including our earliest learners um here in um Nashville Public Schools and some other innovative, um, but very needed uh programs and supports across our, our school district. Um, so you can see those aspirational budget investment opportunities there with associated investments that will be necessary um in order for us to move the needle um in these spaces. And we try to tie these aspirational investments and opportunities to what we call our theory of action, right? Where are we today, where would we like to be, and what is required of us in order to get there? Um, so that's what's included in our aspirational budget. I'll just run through them quickly, the 1% COLAs increase, the early learning centers, our Grow Together with MNPS um initiative, our vision of performing arts. Um, by the way, congratulations to our Emmy award-winning um students in Nashville Public Schools. They won their first Emmy back in February for their every student known work. Um, our SCIF program, our Student Success Centers. Uh, we want to continue our work around and really accelerate our work around college and career readiness and advanced academics. Our students are rising to the occasion. Um, as we're able to provide these opportunities to the students, we know are extremely talented, more and more of them are completing industry certifications and dual enrollment, dual credit um opportunities. We are seeing improvement in ACT um scores as well as ASVAB performance. So we want to continue to accelerate um that and create those seamless transitions for our students. Uh, we want to continue to um pour into our exceptional education supports. Uh, we know that health is, is key, particularly to attendance and engagement um in the, in, in our school system and in their instructional blocks. Uh, we want to also continue to work towards our facilities preventive maintenance so we're not um going deeper around our deferred maintenance needs and then continuing to expand upon our classroom associate model. So I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Robles, who's just going to give you kind of a backdrop of our outlook and then um dig a little bit into our budget summary, uh, proposed summary.
I'm gonna get this closed here. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Yeah, so in addition to the priorities that the Board set out for our um 2025-2026 um school year, uh, another important consideration for how we build the budget but also how we need to be prepared to manage our budget next year are some of the things that are um, you know, potentially impacting uh next year in terms of um uncertainty or volatility around that. So briefly, I think in the local revenue uh side, um, I think it's this great, we, you know, metro government has a strong fund balance, our debt ratings are great, so which allows to, you know, raise debt, all of which provides financial stability. And um, the four-year property tax reappraisal, um, welcome additional revenue uh to the budget. However, um, we all are um, you know, could be potential, potentially impacted by the uh uncertainty that is brought by some of the emerging economic and political actions, especially uh tariffs that can increase um the cost of goods and impact our budget. Um, so those are some of the things that we need to uh manage through and keep into consideration. Specifically for education, at the state level, um, you all are probably aware of a legislation that has gone through that can have uh impact that is greater than what we have already factored in. Uh, there's a new voucher uh legislation uh that, you know, we've, we've taken that into consideration, but depending on how um that progresses, it could have an increased impact on the um state revenue through TISA um that can hurt us on, on what we could expect to get next year. Um, as well as uh, there's been additional approvals of state charter schools, which that also takes funding um out of the TISA funds that MNPS gets and direct them to the state charter schools. Uh, and um, the fiscal capacity factor, which is, you know, sort of the, the index that um establishes how much funding is done by the state versus the local government, uh, that factor will go up. Um, and we're anticipating that there will be about a $10 million reduction on the TISA revenue that we'd expect next year. There are two cycles left on, on the TISA calculation, uh, one May and one June. So it's towards the end of June when we'll really know um what we would expect for next year. And then at the federal level, um, there, there is a high level of uncertainty around uh potential cuts that could uh take place for uh programs and grants, um, you know, that MNPS relies on. Um, we, um, in March, there was a um, a stop that was placed to ESER liquidation extension. This was the ability for us to use ESER funds uh through the end of this uh fiscal year and get that claim back. Um, we have worked through with TDOE to get those um, um, claims paid back, uh, but it's still um in the uh US Department of Education for them to approve. So the outcome of that is, is still uncertain and it could have an impact to um, to our revenue. And um, the House uh budget bill that was uh passed last night, uh, does include a $5 billion nationwide federal school choice program uh that could also have an impact. Uh, you know, we'll see what happens at the Senate. Um, but these are factors that uh willing, you know, inject uncertainty and, and potential variability to what we're looking at. And that is also uh things that, these are things that we consider as we think about next year and, and the budget. That said, as uh Dr. Battle shared with you, um, we have made some historical progress. And uh, that is definitely the result of, you know, the fabulous educators that we have in our district, uh, amazing students, um, but also the power of uh having sustained investment in, in public education. And so we're grateful that um the mayor proposed a um 13% increase uh for MNPS, uh, which is the most significant investment that we've had in education today. Uh, and this will definitely help us continue the work that we have been doing um and helping us retain um our amazing educators, uh, continue to strengthen academic support and um establish uh, you know, the, the Budget Sustainability Fund. Fund that has been set, and ensure that everything has the resources that they need. As Dr. Battle was referencing, these are programs that have shown the results, that we want to continue to invest. There are no new investments, this continuation of what has been working. And also want to mention that in addition to all the programs that Dr. Battle went through, the key investments, that we are going to be able to continue to fund through this proposed budget on our operating fund. Mayor O'Connell's budget includes $15 million to maintain a nurse in every school, which we're really grateful for, that, you know, that that will continue, and that budget is in the Health Department's budget, so that will continue and also continue to work to increase the number of school resource officers coverage that we have for for MMPD. So this is this is a summary of changes from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 that we're proposing. In this summary, in the top section, there's almost $45 million that are investments on our employee compensation and benefits, as Dr. Battle was mentioning. We're proposing a 3% COLA in addition to the salary step increase that we do for educators to, you know, help continue to retain and recruit the best in the state, as well as the investments on the health insurance for our certificated and support team members and the pension benefits for them as well. And then, as Dr. Battle went through and and referenced the key investments that we have been funding that are reflected here, we are moving textbook adoption funds into the operating fund, which is going to be critical to continue to meet the required adoption cycles and have the funds available to do it the year prior to when the students need it. So if you go through the process of ordering the textbooks, you know, the the adoption process and ordering that the students will have the high-quality material in their schools when school starts in August. There's a number of charges that we work with with Metro Government that are reflected in our budget, that are standard and 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 we work through every year. There is a $1.2 million investment on safety and security. This is what Dr. Battle mentioned, which is the investment on our high schools to and continue to enhance the security measures, specifically our weapons detection system. And we also have included what would be a $13.5 million increase to the funds that need to be passed through to the MMPS authorized charter schools. So that's a requirement that the local funds that we get, there's a portion that gets distributed to charter schools. As our revenue increases, we have to reflect the portion of those funds that would be distributed to the MMPS authorized charter schools. We have included the investments that Dr. Battle referenced here, so the $20.4 million on school-based student support for exceptional education, ESL, speech, others that are critical needs for population of students that have continued to grow, and we want to serve as they deserve it, and and we need to deploy resources to our schools and their school budgets. We have considered also $21.4 million that include inflationary and contractual increases that help us continue the services at the level that we have to date, and the $65.5 million that Dr. Battle described to support all the key programs that have been funded through ESER Bridge in the current year, prior, you know, was funded through ESER. And we are bringing those dollars into the operating fund to continue those critical investments that are helping us deliver the results that Dr. Battle was highlighting at the beginning of her presentation. To meet the budget and and balance it, we have been working hard at identifying what we call some targeted savings. So this is, you know, areas where we have deprioritized investments on parts of our programs, contracts that we have, you know, maintained at the same level, not not increased. To give an example, we have work through a contract in partnership with Vanderbilt to evaluate a lot of the important work and do research on the work so we understand the return on investments. There's a specific contract with with an organization that would help us expand that evaluation. We're not pursuing that in order to prioritize the critical investments that 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 we're doing for our students that I that was mentioned before. So we work through our budget to identify those opportunities to do the targeted savings, and we've also worked on identify budget efficiencies, which essentially is managing, you know, in the short and midterm, the savings where we have positions that are opened and where the dollars are not spent. To use an example, a school may be allocated five teachers to to provide exceptional education support. Only three of those teachers are hired, we're able to hire at the beginning of the year. The other two, we may be able to hire later in the year, in December. Those are, those open positions are dollars that we can actively repurpose and use to manage the budget. Correct. So what I was gonna go as Dr. Battle is is making sure that I don't forget to mention is that this, there is no reduction of funding for the school supports in this in this proposal, and this effort on budget efficiency is not reducing the allocations to the schools, is managing to. So we are committed and will continue to be committed to fill all the positions at the school. So this requires active management. So as we go through the year, we'll monitor, and if we're successful at what we want, which is to, you know, have no open positions, we will shift and make sure that we make adjustments in other places in our budget to make sure that those positions are filled and funded. And some of what you'll see reflected here also is the the adjustment that we made on the number of positions. This is a reflection of moving, by moving the ESER Bridge funds into the operating fund, we're reflecting all the positions that were previously funded through ESER Bridge to reflect it here, as well as truing up all the positions that, you know, do are deployed to schools or the school budgets are are growing and, you know, throughout the year to, for example, when there's a student that has an IEP and we need to deploy a one-to-one pair, all those adjustments, we're making sure that are reflected here to true up the the budget and reflect the actual number of positions. Yeah, so the, as Dr. Battle was pointing out, the the positions that are listed, there's a difference, it's not, those are not new, it's just true enough, the positions that have been adjusted since last fiscal year. And that concludes my section, so now.
Turn it back over to you, Chair Porterfield.
Thank you so very much, and thank you for your commitment to our students. It is very much appreciated. I guess I can now say as a former MMPS parent, since my little one has graduated, I can sincerely say that I appreciate appreciate y'all so much, and there's no place that I would rather send my child than to Metro Nashville Public Schools. And thank you for taking care of my child throughout her educational career, as well as the other 82,000 students that you all are responsible for. And as a former MMPS teacher and a former MNEA member, again, thank you for everything that you do focusing on taking care of our students, but also on taking care of our families and on compensation. I do have a few questions, and then I will open it up to members of the Budget and Finance Committee first, and then to other members of the body that seek to be recognized. My first question is, you mentioned something about offering four-year scholarships to students. Could you explain just a little bit more about that, speak a little bit more about that program?
Absolutely. So we have, again, partnered with every local college and university. It started out with our Better Together partnership with Nashville State Community. Now it has expanded to FIS, Tennessee State, Vanderbilt, Belmont, and Trevecca University, where our students, based upon just meeting key metrics that indicate they're prepared for their post-secondary experience, the culminating result of that is that they receive, they apply for and are eligible, most receive a four-year full-ride scholarship to those respective colleges and universities. Well, we don't always, because everybody gets really excited about that, we don't always get to talk about what's happening in the years leading up to that. So we are working really closely with our local presidents and chancellors and provosts on seamless pathways for our students. We believe that when families are choosing national public schools, that they can see their pathway all the way through college, career, and other opportunities out in the world. And so we're backwards mapping around all the milestones that should be a part of a student's journey. We're providing residency programs where students who once believed that they were not college material, they're staying on campus in between their sophomore and junior year, junior and senior year for a couple weeks, they're taking college-level courses, they're living in the dorms, just to build their capacity and their belief that they should also be afforded the opportunity to continue to grow and learn on that campus. Again, it's helping really boost our early, our ready graduate status, because students are receiving early post-secondary opportunities while they're participating in those experiences. So it includes college visits, it includes mentorship, just all kind of the prerequisite opportunities that some get, but we want to make sure it's available to the majority, if not all, of our students as they prepare for their post-secondary experience. Now, the key here is that it's coupled with our internationally-known academies of Nashville. We've historically done really good work in preparing students for their career opportunities, really looking at their aspirations, whether they're looking into studying either in college or going right into the career field. And so now we have a pretty strong model for preparing students across the board for those experiences when when they graduate. But that is, University MMPS, we always culminate that experience for our graduating seniors in April with an event called Signing Day. We have signing days all the time for athletes. Why are we not doing it around academics? So we've started that as an annual tradition and milestone for our students as they're signing on to their post-secondary opportunities.
Thank you for that. Are the the four-year scholarships, are they income-based?
Yes and no. Many of the colleges and universities are, there are some of the scholarships that are last-dollar scholarships, and there are some that are much more aggressive. One example in our partnership with Vanderbilt University, by the way, they're offering unlimited scholarships to our national public school students. Students are also afforded a $6,000 summer scholarship, they're between their junior and senior year while they're studying studying at Vanderbilt to complete additional courses, to study abroad, to to participate in an apprenticeship. So it it looks a little bit different at every school, that are some that are income-based and others that just meet students where they are. If it's just a little bit, then they provide that, but if it's all, they also provide that level of support for our students.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell us, what is the SCIF, Students With Interrupted Formal Education? What is that program, really briefly?
So if I had to put it in a few words, there are students who might come to us that are overage, so they've had some kind of break in their educational journey. So maybe they have missed a year of school or not completed a full year of their coursework, so there's been some kind of interruption in their educational journey, and we're needing to really close the gap and accelerate their learning process. Sometimes it includes students who are learning a second language, sometimes not, but there has been a determined break in the student's journey at some point along their educational experience in the pre-K, pre-K-12 space.
Thank you so much. And then I just have three more questions, and then we'll kick it over to someone else. The school health clinics that's listed as a, I think that was maybe under the aspirational budget, are are, is that in reference to the the health clinics that teachers can go to, or are these clinics in the schools for students?
So these are differentiated from a wellness center and clinics that we partner with Vanderbilt University. So right now, staff and their families can actually leverage that based upon their benefits plan. This is in addition to the to the the wellness centers that are in remote locations. We have a main location on Brentford Avenue. These are, years back, we had clinics, particularly in our high schools, and we outfitted them, we partnered with local health organizations, so that educators and students, if there was any indication of a health concern or like determining if if there were medications needed or an inability to work or study for the day, that the clinic was made available to staff and to students to get an immediate assessment of that, to recapture instructional and professional time. So they were health professionals that were in our high schools outfitted clinic-based so that we could kind of triage the needs and make determinations around next steps, so that many of you are parents here, sometimes you're a student, your child wakes up with a little cough or a runny nose, and parents are having to make that decision on, is this a stay-at-home moment, or is this a we are gonna push-through moment, right? We want to make sure that we're not kind of passing germs and and opportunities for sickness around. And so the health clinics allow parents to go ahead and send students to school. We could send them to the school nurse, or not the school nurse, the the health clinic, where there are trained professionals there to make that determination and support families in that way.
Okay, thank you. And with the, with both the health clinics and the wellness clinics, have you all looked at any type of like partnership with Metro General to see if there could be savings there? I know the wellness clinics are with Vanderbilt, but I'm just, I'm curious to know if you all explored that option and if there's a possibility for potential savings.
We are always exploring options to make sure that we have the best benefits plan and opportunities for our employees. So we're always digging in on on that regard for our certificated staff. We do have our own insurance trust who works closely with our internal benefits team, but also some external professionals to help really inform and make those decisions on those partnerships. But we're always exploring those opportunities to provide quality healthcare to our employees.
Awesome, thank you. Did the cost of health insurance go up this year?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let. I just see a head nod, a head nod is fine for me. Did you all cover that increase so that the teachers aren't having to cover that? Okay, a head nod is, that's good enough for me.
Yes.
And then my last question, it was about the comment, and I believe you, I believe a comment was made afterwards, so I may have an understanding, but I want to make sure that I understand. You talked about open positions being used for salary savings, which I know in general, Metro Government like does that often. That's one way that we recognize savings. Any example, you use like a exceptional education teacher, and that just really like triggered me as a former exceptional education teacher, because that means that that's like a higher caseload and concerns about like, are the students like receiving their services and, you know, all of those things. So when you all are utilizing open positions for salary savings, my assumption is that you are still actively trying to hire in those positions, you are just saving money until you hire, but you're not delaying a hire. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are not, these are positions, what you will see is that all the positions are required positions, either by law, by, you know, this is determined by an IEP or a 504 plan, it could be determined by state laws around classroom ratio, so these are all required positions. So we are not looking to reduce the ability for our school teams to post and hire and recruit those employees by state law. We still have to provide the services that are that are a part of the IEP, and so our our exceptional education team and our ESL team works closely with our schools to make informed decisions about how to do that as we continue to search for those employees. And one thing I want to go back and clarify on the insurance, so our split for insurance benefits is 75% are on the district, 25% on the employee. Everybody will see an increase, but what we have done over the last two years, and even with this budget, is taking on that responsibility as, to the greatest extent possible, not to pass on all or an expanded amount to to our employees.
Thank you so very much. So in the queue, we have Vice Chair Tooms, followed by Councilmember Johnston, Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Soror, and then Councilmember Cash, and then Councilmember Druffel. You're gonna go before Councilmember Cash, since we're recognizing committee members first. Councilmember Tooms, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Director Battle, did you have, did you all have a slide? Oh, and thank you for being here. I'm sorry. And thank you, School Board members, for for being here as well. Did you have a slide breaking down the 65 and a half million ESER Did you have a slide breaking down the 65 and a half million ESER bridge?
Yes, you do. We do have a slide that shows all those investments. In previous slides, we've kind of laid it out, just for the sake of time, we didn't build it out as the individual slide. But if you look under column three, those are all the investments that are part of the ESER bridge, not all, the majority of them, the greatest investments that are included in that line item.
So within those buckets, do you have a slide or spreadsheet somewhere else that says like college and career readiness?
Yes, we can, we can pull that up. We do have it.
Thank you. And then I saw on the aspirational budget, the classroom associates, didn't we fund that last year?
Two years ago, we did start our transformation into the classroom associate model, which has been highly successful for us as a school district. We actually see this as a strategy that has helped accelerate and maintain the continuity of progress that we've seen. It was studied in the national report as well. So that initial investment allowed us to build out a ratio of classroom associates for all of our schools. The number-one piece of feedback we received from our schools is, this is great. We love it, it's effective. If we could get a few more, if y'all could reduce that ratio just a bit, that will help us really continue to have the coverage that we need. So that's what that additional investment is. Now that we have implemented it, we were kind of in the do-now, now we're in the build towards that we have some more data points and evaluative data around what will be our model space.
Okay, so that's just, the 9.3 million is for additional?
That's correct. To reduce the ratio of allocation for classroom associates.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
And if you would like, I can go back to your additional, your last question. College and career readiness supports, there was a 6.3 million, approximately $6.3 million investment, mental health, and NCL supports are approximately $6.3 million. Community achieves is approximately $1.5 million. Our scholars portfolio is now the most significant investment, it's around $24 million. Our safety ambassadors are around 3.4. Our SVB, school determinates are approximately $12 million. And then we have several line items of additional small projects and programs that are about $11 million.
Okay, tell me the safety ambassadors.
Our safety ambassadors are our safety leaders in our elementary schools. So historically, we've not had SROs in our elementary schools. We've had them years past in our high schools. This was the first year that we had fully-staffed SROs in our middle schools. So our model for elementaries have been safety ambassadors. We do have law enforcement officers at every elementary schools, they're not SROs, so just to be clear about that. This past year, we began to pilot SROs in elementary schools after close coordination and training with MNPD in around nine of our schools. So we're still 65 short of having elementary SROs in our schools. I know that MNPD is working diligently to try to expand and accelerate in that space, but there are lots of needs out there. So our safety ambassadors work closely with our school teams. They're unarmed, and they work with school administration to ensure adherence to safety plans. They provide support throughout the day by checking doors and windows. I want to remind us that we now have a state law where our school buildings are checked frequently, and there are consequences that come if there's a, we train our team on this, we got to make sure there's no prop doors, we got to make sure the windows are secured. Our safety ambassadors really support our school teams with that work amongst another, a host of other things, including the increased required number of drills that our schools have to administer.
And what was the cost for the?
6.3 million.
And the 12 million for the school determinant needs, did every school get a chance to?
It is based upon the unique needs of our students. We've used a base formula in the past, and then we've differentiated that based upon the needs, but it has been spread out across all of our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. And Director Battle, what did you say school's portfolio was? I know you said that was the biggest bucket, but what was that?
Our scholars' portfolio. It is our Promising Scholars Summer Program, Accelerating Scholars, our High-Dosis Tutoring, and our Enriching Scholars, which is our extended weekend program.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnston, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm really frustrated. This is by percentage the largest amount of money that we allocate every year, and five minutes before you guys come, this is not a budget. So it's really hard to come with educated questions around specific things, and I personally spent, I know there's other people in the room that spend a lot of time looking at things to be able to really dig into it, and there's really not a whole lot here, but I'm gonna do my best. So since FY '21, if this proposed budget goes into effect, the increase in money is roughly half a billion dollars, and it equates to more than 50% of the original budget in FY '21, which was $914 million and some change. How has enrollment grown since FY '21?
Let us see if we can pull up the approximate numbers here, and I can respond to that question.
Councilmember Johnston, would you like to ask your next question while they look for that data?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you so much. While they're looking that up, the school-based student supports of 20.4 million, can you expand on that? And how many new positions does that equate to?
Let me say a question first. So there are no new positions in that this is shoring up, kind of truing up, positions that have been in other funding sources, ESER fund balance, and then your specific question the school-based student supports. So those are specifically FTEs, educators who are supporting some of our most unique students with exceptional education needs, so exceptional education teachers, paraprofessionals. It includes our English language learner professionals, speech pathologists, so all the services that were required by law to provide to students who have those unique needs.
But they're not new, they're not new?
They're not new.
So how is it on top of last year's budget?
So what you see here, and what you see represented in the majority of our budget is that we've been leveraging various pots of funds to bring our budget together. So mainly, those positions have been a part of our ESER budget, so remember that sunset in 2024. This current year, we work with council to have approval to leverage our fund balance to continue those services across the board. And so now we're, our proposal was to move those budgets that were on non-recurring funds into our recurring operating budget.
Okay, so when you, when you have ESER bridge to operating at 65 and a half, but then you have school-based student supports of 20.4, you're saying that that's all, that was all previously funded in ESER? And then if those are legal requirements, what did you do before ESER funds?
I'm sorry, I just misspoke. So the ESER bridge, that would be true. For the school-based student supports, those are positions. So what we've seen, just going back to your enrollment question, we are seeing, we considered it somewhat flat, but we have seen an increase in students. Last year, when I was here, two years ago, I talked about us serving around 80,000 students. We've seen that increase. We're nearly 82,000 students today.
What was it in 2019, though? Because like, the pandemic sort of skews everything, and I know we dropped enrollment, so that's sort of not a fair comparison. So when we're talking about a budget increase of $500 million roughly from 2021 or FY20 or FY21, what was the enrollment before?
So I'll have to get you that number back, but what I can tell you-
But it's basically flat.
Yeah, it's basically flat, but what's critical here is that, one, it's a celebration because we've had, we now are home to three different voucher systems. We've had a number of charter schools expanded under our portfolio here as an LEA, so it is a celebration moment. But we also know that many of the disruptions, distractions that were caused by the pandemic have increased the needs of our young people. And so we've had to respond quickly, swiftly, ongoing, in an ongoing manner, to respond to those heightened needs. When we were in the pandemic and coming out and surveying our educators, our families and our students, one thing that really surfaced was mental health supports and gaps that were persisting with our students, both with our EE and ESL population. So part of that is, it costs more when you're providing those unique services, that our students, they deserve it. They deserve to have their needs met in that way. So that is what you're seeing in some of the trade-off there. And so when you look back at that school-based student support, students' supports, that, those were adjustments we've made as, give you an example, we have a student who transfers in in October. They weren't in our baseline budget when we started the year, but they've come with high needs, and so we've had to add a paraprofessional, we've had to add a one-on-one, and we've had to add a certificated teacher because now the caseload for the EE teachers are not in balance. And so that's what that's reflected.
Okay, but so the school-based student supports is, was not ESER-funded prior, so that was a mis, right? Am I understanding?
I just, I just said I misspoke.
You missed, but I just want to make sure.
The first description was around the ESER bridge.
Okay, so if I, and I have my glasses on, but I don't know if that's a zero or a nine, but it looks like, is it 292 new positions for the schools, for the school-based student supports? So it is almost 300 new student, new positions?
So it means that it touches in some way 292 different positions. So here's another example. There have been cases where, so some of them are FTEs, some of them are also where we've had to, we've had a lot of this, in fact. Someone came in as a classroom associate, there was one need, they moved to a para-professional role, which is a part of our EE plan. Well, then the demand required us to have a certificated teacher, right? And so we've been having to shift and evolve based upon the needs of our young people that we're serving.
So wouldn't there be a net zero there if you?
No, those positions cost more.
Right, but, but the FTE prior, in the example that you're giving, would, wouldn't, would go away, so now we have a new FTE, but it's a net zero.
Not necessarily, because paraprofessionals, and if they're not a one-on-one, they're serving multiple students.
Okay.
So it could be in addition to.
Okay, my frustration, I'll say, as far as like bridging ESER, and I understand that there are some challenges that remain from COVID, totally get that, but ESER funds, just so people understand, ESER is basic, for schools, is basically what ARPA was to Metro. And we knew that those were one-time funding, and in my opinion, the way that we handled it anyway at Metro was that we never intended, those funds were never intended even from the federal government, to create new programming that then at the end, when those funds sunsetted, that the local taxpayer would have to pick up the tab and sustain those funds, which is exactly what's happening here. We did a pretty good job in Metro of not creating a funding cliff, but it looks like MNPS has created quite a funding cliff because 65 and a half million dollars is quite a lot. I'm just gonna leave that there. So, so enrollment is decently flat. I get charter schools, I get that that's pulling from there. I did want to say, I mean, every other department has created a line-by-line, very clear budget, and they're very transparent about where their money is going, and it's not just my frustration, I've heard from teachers, I've heard from MNPS staff, I've heard from parents, they want to know where their money is going. So I would like to ask if you guys could provide that very clear, concise budget line item. We're talking about almost one point, well, it's one point whatever, billion dollars, and I think that everybody deserves to have that transparency so that we can see exactly where those dollars are going. So can you commit to doing that in the next week or so? We have to make a decision here, and every other department has been able to do that. I feel like we, everyone deserves to be able to see that. Can we get that done?
So the first thing I will address, there was a comment about when you receive documents, we submitted our documentation as requested. The second thing is, we create a budget book every year. We are a little bit different from every other Metro department in that we are also governed by an elected school board. And so I have a cycle of approvals that I must have approved by our school board before I can provide that. Now, we post our budget every year for the public to be able to see and can provide that at that point in time, but that first has to go to my school board for approval, and then we'll bring, we'll release that to the public. That's not an issue as well.
Didn't the board not pass the budget because they didn't have a line item budget to look at?
No, that's, so this is where, every year, this time of year, this is, this is not new. This is where we are this time of year, every year. This is a tension for superintendents across the country because our cycles for planning vary, sometimes from the cycles from the local government and from the state government. So this is not uncommon by any stretch of the imagination for us to be at this point today, knowing that our school board will go through a process of approval over the next few weeks.
And to respond to that, also, we have different aspects of, we have to wait from the state to get certain allocations confirmed that other Metro departments do not have to do, given the allocation, as we said earlier, the fiscal capacity increased. We just found that-
Or July.
Yeah, we didn't, we just found that out. So part of the reason is, we can't bring a complete budget because we're waiting for the State Department of Education to give us correct allocations that have been confirmed and that just random estimates. And so we have a different timeline because we are waiting for the states for those allocations than to be able to give a full-fledged aspect.
Isn't it fair to say, though, that you have enough information to give us something with more specificity than what you gave us five minutes before this hearing started?
We were working on a budget up until this week to give the fundamental part. We still have to do work with the principals and student-based budgeting. It's a process, and that's one of the things we work through. So it's not really until June that we really can actually have, when we have the fundamental numbers from the state, which is a crucial part of that budget to determine. There's been years past where we realized from the state, there was an $8 million hole that didn't come, so we found out after we submitted our budget. So then we will be giving you an incomplete budget. So I know there's a frustration, we understand that, but given the fiscal cycle of the state and the speed of the state of where they give all school districts, not just Metro Government, of the district, we cannot work at the same pace of giving a complete budget cycle when we're literally days of, up to last week, late last week, getting final numbers from the state. That dramatically changes the budget.
I'm gonna stick with my original statement that I think that you can do better with some more specificity. It doesn't have to be the final budget, but certainly we could have something more than what, a four-chunked priority list so that we can actually make decisions. Because it's this body that makes the decision on how much money you guys get, and we can't, it's hard to make those decisions when we don't know exactly where those dollars are going. We can move on.
But that's our job of the elected school board to determine the budget, and we determine-
It's our job as the elected Metro Council to allocate the dollars.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
But the allocations differ from-
Okay, so since the budget has increased so exponentially over the past five fiscal years, it's frustrating for me to hear that we still have so many complaints of lack of resources. So can you, can you explain to me how these budget decisions have supported the needs of the employees? Because that's where I'm getting a lot of the complaints, not only employees, but parents and teachers as well, on how that's actually supporting the needs. How can we have an additional $500 million over the past five years with relatively flat enrollment and still such frustration with lack of, lack of resources as evidenced by the MNEA summer survey that went out? I'm assuming that you all have received that, and I'll share it with the rest of the council, but have you, have you received that? I mean, it's alarming to say, stress and burnout related to heavy responsibilities and growing workloads emerged as the most common reason educators were thinking about leaving. While compensation was mentioned, it was clear that the emotional toll of the job is weighing even heavier on staff, points, a growing crisis in educator well-being that extends far beyond, beyond financial concerns. I've even been told by multiple teachers that teaching is actually secondary to what they feel like their jobs are. That's a breakdown in the structure of what's, what's going on, and it's evidenced because our outcomes, I understand growth, I don't know what growth means, because the outcomes are that while we're celebrating this huge graduation rate in 2024, this is terrible, that, that only 35% on average is, are ready graduates? You've got high schools that 4.2% of their graduates are ready to graduate? Now, Hume-Fogg and MLK are kicking ass, quite frankly, but the rest of everybody, nobody, Hillsborough High School, 26.8% of the 90%, 90% graduation rate, 26.8% are ready graduates. And yet, we're celebrating this huge graduation rate, and what's happening with these kids when they get out of school and they're, they're not ready for post-secondary education, and they're not ready for the workforce? But we're celebrating it? $500 million extra in the past five years? Flat enrollment? No budget to look at? I mean, I really want someone to, to respond to that.
Councilmember, go and give them the opportunity to respond, please.
Thank you.
Yes, we are extremely proud of our students here in national public schools because they are making significant progress and they're achieving at higher levels than they ever have before. So we want to continue to celebrate that. So we want to continue to celebrate that. If, as an educator, I will tell you, you may not know the specific details about the ready graduate, that is a fairly new metric for the state of Tennessee. Our schools are making significant progress around that as well. You would have to provide me some more specificity around the resources that are being communicated that families or educators are saying they don't have. Part of our responsibility is to make sure that we're closing that gap. I feel strongly that we have been doing that very well, as evidenced in all of the outcomes that we have been able to realize. Again, I'm going to reference the budget summary document that is up on the screen on slide 12, which provides transparency into our current budget for this current school year, where we're looking to go for next school year, given the investment that was communicated from the mayor. It's pretty clear and straightforward around where those investments are proposed to, to go. Again, it's my responsibility to take this, this proposal and work closely with my elected school board to make the final in the form decisions here. You will also notice on this document, there are still some numbers we don't have, right? Including the fiscal capacity that we will not receive until June or July. So it would be incumbent upon me and working close to my administration team and working with the school board not to put a proposed budget out there until we have the information necessary to do so. I will yield the rest of the response to our board chair, I think you wanted to add something as well.
Yes, so I think we need to understand, this is a fundamental way, a way this nation, not our city, treats education and funds education for the service that it is. We, as a nation, treat our teachers with a pink collar job and not the professionals that they are. If we did, this federal government, as we know right now, are making fundamental cuts as we speak on a constant level, but also our state government would truly fund schools and fund the teachers and the professionals that they are, to have master's degree and PhDs and making the money that they have, it's because we as a nation do not fund education as professionals as they would of any other profession, the same part. Would I love to give our teachers, the starting salary would be $100,000? Yes, but what would I put the strain on this budget that you have to decide? We, I've already heard about issues about the funding amount of metro schools, if we want to fund teachers to do that. We as a community, we as a nature do not promote teaching as a profession. I go around constantly asking the community members to have teaching as a profession. And people always say, become a lawyer, become a business person, become entrepreneur. So also part of the profession, like our police, people are not encouraged to go into the teaching profession, so it puts a strain as a whole on an entire system. And so that's why with Mayor Cooper in the past, we made teachers the best paid teachers in the state to make the recruiting more efficient and better for our teaching. So because of the metrics that people on Capitol Hill, either in DC or here in Nashville, make metrics to and, and put restrictions on our teachers that are not education professionals. And that makes the job that much more and more difficult because you have people who are treating our teachers and our students like widgets and factory workers and think that if I do this, our kids will do that. It is a service based economy. It's a service based industry. It takes an intangible aspect to pour into a child and to truly teach them at each individual level. And as we as a community, as we as a country, as we as a state, put our money where our mouth is and truly fund what we need to education, we will always have this problem. And if it could be solved, it would already be done. Someone will put money towards it and we would have made decisions four years ago, six years ago, if we could. We feel for our teachers, we feel the tension, we feel the burden, we understand that and we're doing everything possible. That's why we transform our sub program into classroom associates, so we make sure we have a quality, consistent teachers. I always get the joke, every time then there's inclement weather, the joke I see on Facebook, MNPS, when you get up custody for your child? Because parents understand the intensity it takes to educate their child. When are they going to pick up the books? So if it wasn't an ongoing joke that's on social media, the intensity it takes to do that, it takes a lot. We understand the stress, but it takes people to do that. And just like the police force that Chief Drake is having issues of recruiting more and more police, it's the same thing in the teacher's profession. So we as a community have to come together and encourage our people to become into the teaching profession, become into the education profession and make sure that we don't have the problems that the MNBA did in their survey. We get that and we are trying to do that and do that time and time again. That's why it has been a priority since I've been on this board since November of 2019. Teacher compensation has always been a budget priority for our teachers and that's why we do that.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Johnson, I'm going to come back to you because we have a lot of people in the queue. Councilmember Allen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all for being here. I'm excited to hear about the, the great gains that are being made and would just ask if you would attribute that to the, I mean, there are many things in the ESER, would you attribute that to the scholars portfolio and the high dosage tutoring? And I mean, to me, that says that's, that's worth spending money on and I, I understand concerns with, you know, with increased, I do notice though, that from 2019 to 2026, metro budget has increased 70% and YALZ has increased 60%. So I mean, you know, that's, that's, everything is growing. So I appreciate the effort that has been put in to provide what students need. My question would be, in terms of the tutoring and the, the money that's being spent there, is that adequate to cover the needs of students for the next year?
So again, we've been evaluating this program. I'll just take us back to when we started all these efforts, every school district was asked to innovate and really think about the research based practices that could help close gaps and accelerate learning for students. Almost every district across country attempted high dosage tutoring in some form or fashion. We've been very fortunate to have built a program that actually works for our students. We are leveraging our high doses, we do have to prioritize, so we don't, this number investment does not reflect being able to offer that for every student in national public schools. But it does help us to prioritize students who may be impacted by the third and fourth grade retention law that the state passed two years ago, I believe it is now. And then from there, we have targeted grades and grade levels that by research, these are the, the grades and content areas you should focus in on that tend to have positive impact across the board, mainly ELA and math. And so it does give us an opportunity to mostly maintain the high dosage tutoring we do have, it does not allow us to expand to additional students beyond that capacity.
Okay, great, I'm glad we're doing that. And then on to the associates program, which apparently has been really, really successful. Is there a savings in substitute that could be reflected somewhere in, in a reduction and is that already built in?
So we've already built that in. So what we're doing this, this past year, so this is year two, we've been really kind of progress monitoring the ratios, getting feedback. I think this is one of the areas where we've gotten feedback from our staff and we're doing something about it. We made a few adjustments where we could this past year, given that the majority of our classroom associates are who function like substitute teachers in some ways are through that budget item. So we were able to recapture a few positions to help us particularly at our larger schools to reduce just lightly. I mean, we're talking about just like one, maybe two additional classroom associates here and there. So we are maximizing that budget to the greatest extent and we're kind of digging into the, the rate at which some of our traditional subs are subbing, just to make sure we're maximizing every dollar.
Gotcha, great, thank you. And then just to ask again about, about timing, the year I was budget chair, I think we got that really thick thing and then we had the fun surprise of discovering that the state had changed their numbers and that everything had to be reworked, which was.
I remember that year.
I spent a lot of time talking to freedom. And so I understand, I understand the hesitation to, to put things out knowing that they will change dramatically. Can you talk about when you think we will be able to have more, more detailed documents? Or if, if we can get copies of that kind of stuff, even having that kind of breakdown would be handy?
Yes, thanks for the question. As Dr. Battle mentioned and, and Chair Player, right now essentially we will get the last information, we should get that in mid-June from the state. So that's when we really can find to the, the numbers. So we're, we're, you know, working on the line item budget all the time when we're building this up. It's not like we're waiting until the last minute to build it up. But the, the variation right now can be significant on, on what we could expect from, from the, from the state in particular, as you know, there's a new charter law that was passed that is going to change how the pass through funding for charters is going to look like. We have not yet received specific instructions of how, how exactly that should be reflected and how that is going to change. So that is also going to change this budget and, you know, significantly in, in how it looks and the implications through the.
If I can ask, Councilwoman Allen, if I can add, so that year was difficult, we have many more moving pieces this year than we've ever had. So things are changing, again, shifting locally at the state level and at the federal level. All of that is happening at one time and it's not on our budget timeline. So we are reaching out, we're trying to gather as much information as possible, but there are some unknowns still and so we, we're trying to be very responsible as we're adapting and changing, inserting those numbers so that our budget is a suitable budget once we fully communicate.
Understood, thank you, thank you for that explanation. And I would, I mean, there is a budget presentation on your, on your website that I guess sort of, it explains what the buckets look like and what they might be relative to each other. Is that as good a guide for us to go out for now, which is, which is helpful? So thank you for what y'all are doing and I mean, I guess we'll, we'll give you a number and y'all will work with it in the end, so have fun.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, I did want to lift up that it is about 6:27, so we want to try to be concise with both our questions and our answers, if y'all don't mind. In the queue, I have Councilmember Swor, Councilmember Cash, Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Ellis, Councilmember Johnston and Councilmember Tooms. Councilmember Swor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I wish you made that comment after I spoke, but I'll try to be as concise as possible. Thank you, Dr. Battle and your team for being here and for all that you do. But I do think that it is very important, since we're talking budget and people are watching, that we, we understand the frustration, but we also make sure that we're providing the right information. I do think, and I've had budget conversation with Budget Chair and Dr. Battle before, one of the things people have to understand is that there's something called continuity of services, where the school has to be funded at the same level as the prior year for what they were using before. That is why the budget starts with last year. So if you take last year budget book, it has the details of everything done last year and then what you're looking at is, what is the difference between last year amount and what have we had in this year? And I think if people take it from that aspect, it actually provides some information. The other thing that we also have to understand is that with the continuity of services, the state funding plays a big part into that. And I'm saying this because of all my budget conversation. In the state of Tennessee, the state funds all the school board or the local government at about 75% to the state, 25% to the local school board. That is inverse for Davidson County. We do 75%, state do 25%. That is why every time the state budget goes lower because of that continuity of service, our budget has to go up to make up for it. That's just the formula and how it works. There is frustration, we need to be mad, I get it, but we, we're targeting the wrong folks. I think we need to talk to the state to make sure that they are adding more to it. The, what is that impact thing that we're talking about right now, that the 10 million? That is also something else where they're looking at the revenue from each district and then deciding how much the state will fund. And because we have increased revenue, we're going to get an eat on our school funding. And so I think it's very important for us to get that straight to our audience, to everybody watching, is that this is a part of it. And when money goes to charter or go to voucher or something reduced on the state level because we have to meet that continuity of service, we have to pick it up, otherwise our kids will not be getting the things that they're getting. To me, as a former MMPS parent, you cannot put a dollar on everything and then the outcome that our kids are having, I think is worth celebrating. And I think that, I get the frustration from the taxpayers, we have to, I get it, but I, I want people to understand what adds to that, that is not all MMPS. Personally, for me, I blame the state. I'm going to say that again. And so I wanted to put that out there and I hope that that helps some to what we're, to what we're saying. Now to my questions. I did see the MNEA report and I did see the frustration, part of the question about teachers having to do, take on more roles, being coaches, doing other things that are not related. I know of a teacher that is a coach that doesn't have a, a, a van, takes the kids himself, does a whole lot of things. So what are we doing since we have this report here and within what we have to budget for specifically address these burnouts and these concerns by our teachers? Because if they are not in a good space, we cannot expect those outcome for our kids. So that would be my first question.
Yeah, the first thing I'll call attention to is particularly the ESER bridge in our operating budget. What we were, what we've been able to accomplish there, again, this is not recommending anything new, was key strategies based upon the feedback, based upon the research, what was out there, right? And so when you think about, there was a, there was a, a, a ask, we received feedback again around expanded mental health supports. We've done that. We now have additional mental health and SEO supports. As an example, this council helps support us in implementing advocacy centers in all of our elementary schools. And we now are in the process of proposing that we add for continuity of operations, restorative practice assistance in all of our middle and high schools. That was direct feedback, right? So that our teachers, I'm a teacher, we wear multiple hats. And I do think it's unfortunate that everything really shows up, right? On the front doors of our schools and in our classrooms, right? But they do wear multiple hats, but that is one thing we've tried to close the gap on, getting direct and immediate supports and services in our schools. That's one example. We've talked about the classroom associates, that's another example. So when a teacher is out and they're engaging in professional learning or collaborative planning, they actually have a trusted colleague who knows our students, who understands our plans, who can continue to implement lessons and units. That's a point of frustration for educators when they are rightly so engaging in their professional learning to help continue to accelerate their students, but there's not that trusted, trained adult who is there to keep things moving based upon the acceleration they were seeing. Direct piece of feedback. And again, another piece of that direct feedback is to continue with classroom associates and where we can, to continue to reduce their ratio. Community achieves, I mean, so what I'm, what I'm expressing here and articulating is those key budgets are based upon feedback that we have received from all of our stakeholders. You know, we, we receive critical feedback from our educators, from our support staff, from our families, our principals and administrators. So that has been consistent, in fact, that was required of us before we built that budget leveraging ESER dollars. We had to engage in, in that way. So it is a direct feedback. The unfortunate reality is there continues to be heightened accountability and responsibility on our educators. And so we're trying our best to not keep just piecing things together. We're trying to make sure we're kind of going back to the foundation and building it in ways that help us accelerate. We've had significant investments, it's helped us make steps in the right direction, but we're trying to continue to kind of rebound from years and decades of things that, that have just layered on top of each other that's distracted the work of our educators.
Thank you. I will suggest that, and I know you're probably still doing this, but since the union, since MNIA represents your, your members so much that there's continued conversations and that their input is taken into what are the solutions? I know sometimes as lead, we'll come up with solutions, but I think the people actually impacted should be at the table in designing what those responses should be.
So let me be clear about this, we have ongoing conversations and meetings. I personally have my own superintendent's cabinet where we're meeting and talking about where are we seeing successes? We want to make sure we continue to do the things that are working because that could be even more detrimental to stop doing the things that work and also figuring out ways to accelerate and close gaps. So that's just two examples, but again, I think, I think sometimes you give folks in these roles, titles change. My lifetime dream was to be an educator, a teacher in a classroom. So that doesn't change just because my title did.
Okay, so I have three more questions, I'll make it really quick and I'll give it to you all at the same time so that maybe we can save some time. One is about the ESROs, I actually asked this of the police chief yesterday and I was reminded that I should make it a, 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 a question to you all. One of the things that we saw lately is that because of the policy in, in the threat, you know, no, what is that? I don't know what it's called, where if a kid made a post online or says something, they're arrested.
Threat of mass violence.
Yes, 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 threat of mass violence. And so we have a, a, a large number of kids that are being arrested from our schools. One, our parents notified because I had the case of someone that said they did not know and the kid would pick up. And also I asked this of the police chief yesterday and I want to ask it of you all. We want to take every threat seriously because what happened in NCX should never happen again, right? But we also don't want to have a place where we're now increasing the school to prison pipeline for kids being kids and saying things that they shouldn't say. I'm not saying, I don't know what you're processing and what you're doing with that, but I just want a conversation or an answer to. but I just want a conversation or an answer to how we balancing that and making sure that we're not putting kids in jail for everything. So, that's one of them. The second question that I have is on the family support or ELS support. We, we actually assigned about a million dollar about two budgets ago to have liaisons in the community that speak the language of some of the kids that we have. Language access is still a problem. When we put information out, it's not in every languages. And so, that position created a long time ago, the money we gave you a long time ago, was supposed to have somebody in each community that speaks the language to make sure that we're connecting with families. And so, I, I think the last that I asked, I wasn't sure what happened, but how are we connecting with our non-English families to make sure that at least it's a complete child that we're looking at? And then, on the fiscal capacity impact, which is what we're looking at at this one that says there's about 10 million that we're estimating, do you guys have any plan on what you're going to do with that, or are you going to cover that? Thank you.
To answer your first question, so the, the, there is a state law that requires specific actions of school districts when it comes to threats of mass violence. And so, we have to be in compliance with the law. That includes the recording, reporting process, particularly with your local law enforcement officers, as well as the communications process is standard, regardless of the type of incident that the student is responsible for, which includes communication to the family notification of that process. So, I think sometimes that can be misconstrued. There are some state laws, there are some discipline codes where we don't have a choice around the response, right? Because there's, they're considered zero tolerance, and by state law, we have to respond a certain way. So, there's not much wiggle room in there, but we do follow our due process procedures for, for those and any other incident. With regards to our non-English speaking families, so what we're doing, one, we, I feel like we have one of the best English language learner departments in the country that you'll find. So, we have really talented educators who are building out our structures and our programs. In fact, when we adopt our high-quality instructional materials, we don't do that just in silos. We make sure that our English language learner professionals are part of that to make sure that we have genuine access for all of our students, and all the supplementary activities and assessments are conducive to all of our students. We are home to a number of interpreters and translators. I mean, there's always continued needs to expand upon what's being offered. And then, if I take us back to the summary document, again, this was asked earlier, but those student support services are in response to that, right? Because we're not leaving kids where they are. Our mantra is every student known, and so we're making sure that through that investment for the school-based student supports, it specifically calls out exceptional education, English as a second language students, making sure that they have the appropriate services, programs, educators, who are supporting them and connecting with their families. So, that's what we have in our portfolio there. I can name a few, but those are the key strategies that we do leverage, and I'll let Chief Robles respond to the fiscal impact.
Regarding the fiscal capacity factor, that's one of the variables that we're monitoring and contemplating. Like I mentioned, there's still two cycles of, that will determine final enrollment, fiscal capacity factor, as well as what we could expect on the voucher and state charter schools. So, as we learn more about that, we'll define the best course of action to take, to address those, whatever situation is. But at this moment, that's one of the components that we wanted to name as an example of, the fact, the volatility and variability that we're trying to manage to get to the final budget.
I guess I just want to say that, how do we make sure that it's not adding additional budget on teachers and staff? And where do we go to make up the 10 million? How do we work that out? Do we have any idea? I guess that's, that's the whole point of what this is.
Yeah, I can, happy to respond to that. So, we mentioned earlier with regards to the FTE shift here, where we're having to make some adjustments. None of that involves, when we look at the targeted savings and budget efficiencies, none of that right now touches schools directly, nor does it remove personnel from schools. So, we are, I am hyper sensitive and focused on making sure that when we have those, to try to have as least impact to our schools as possible. If I had it my way, they would never feel any reduction in that space. But for every department, at some point, right? When you're talking about reductions, you get there, but we're trying to do our best to protect our schools so they can continue the great work that they're leading.
Thank you. I'm gonna bump to, real quick, to the Budget and Finance Committee members, and then I'll come right back, because we have one more committee member in queue. Councilmember Johnston kind of threw her hand up that she was good, so I'm gonna go to Council Lady Tooms, and then we have Cash, Evans, and Ellis, and then we're gonna close out everybody. Councilmember Tooms, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to point out, when you're, you know, thinking about and evaluating return on investment for schools, you have to take into account that for MMPS, they take students as they are. So, you may have little Johnny comes to school, little Johnny is not ready to learn, because little Johnny is hungry, little Johnny has witnessed domestic violence, little Johnny's guardian had a drug overdose the night before, little Johnny has to walk through a rough neighborhood to get to school, little Johnny has had a loved one to pass away, so little Johnny is not in a headspace to learn. So, in previous, in previous years, we have not invested, as a city, a state, a country, in the supports that little Johnny needs, so that he can be ready to learn. In the past several years, that $500 million increase that you've seen in, in the school's budget, those supports have been put in place, so that little Johnny can learn. And because we've invested in those supports, so that the little Johnnies can learn, we're seeing overall growth in our school system. So, we have to keep that in mind. Don't compare MMPS to private schools or other schools that cherry pick their students. We take everybody, because every child deserves a quality education. So, I want people to keep that in mind when you're looking at whether or not we're getting a return on investment for our tax dollars.
Can I interrupt you real, to estimate your point? Under the Dean administration, the school's budget was at 48%. Now, we're at 38%, with more students and more staff. So, we have done less collectively over the past decade and a half, with less percentage of the money than we have. So, going back to your point of little Johnny, we're also not taking care of little Johnny, also has siblings, that he has to make sure they get up, because their parents have two jobs, because we have a large part of our sector that's underemployed. So, to your point, Councilwoman Tooms, that is very true, that the return on investment has been exponential, given where we were a decade ago with our budget.
Absolutely, and we should definitely celebrate that growth, as we continue to work to improve, but we do need to celebrate the improvements, and we do need to realize that we are seeing a return on our investment as a city. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tooms. Next, I have Councilmember Cash, also a former MMPS teacher, you're recognized.
Thanks. I was gonna start by, I appreciate Dr. Battle, you acknowledging in your remarks that, that we're, this is a partnership that we're engaged in. And I do want to say to the Chair, and, and, like, we are, we are rushing through this, and, like, we last term had a, had a, an education committee, and while we weren't one of the most active committees, we did have some opportunities to, to kind of prepare for this, this moment, and we're kind of trying to rush through, in about two hours, you know, how we're gonna allocate 1.4 billion, 1.4 billion dollars. So, I really do would like, if, if in the future, we can kind of think about some ways to connect to MMPS leadership and school board prior to this meeting, if that makes sense. Not reinstituting a committee necessarily, but just some preparations ahead of time. And, and I, as somebody who knows T-VAS better than average, that, that five on T-VAS is not an easy thing. It's not just a, you know, participation trophy, it's, it is hard to achieve that five, and so, we, we should be really proud, and I'm, I'm really proud that that is something we can share with the, share with the public. Also, as a parent, I don't know what I'm gonna do without the, like, I've been, I've been a teacher or a parent for 32 years, until last Friday night, and I would, I don't know what I'm gonna do without getting those 4-3, 6-3 calls every Sunday night. But, um, but I want to say that, like, the, the weapons detection systems, like, after what happened at Antioch, like, I feel like that was a really fast and successful rollout of where those went, and it's hate, it's, I hate that we need them, but I think we do, and, and, like, it was, I, I really feel like a pretty fast rollout, and that each day, I could tell, my daughter was giving me reports, and like, it was adjusting each day, and by the, you know, third or fourth day, things were moving fairly nicely, so kudos on that. I want to go back to kind of, kind of talk about burnout, which I know some employees are concerned about, and kind of go back to the classroom associates, which I think, and I have a very specific question about it, but I think the, the, the type of position it is, and the, you're right, consistency and expertise, trusted, trained adult, I get that, and, and I think that is a good model for that. But I'm still hearing from a lot of employees that too many of them, too many of the non-C classroom associates are giving away too much of their planning time, the time that they need to prepare to teach little Johnny, that they are giving too much of that up, and it is causing stress and burnout. And, and the report, and it's common sense that we can understand that some of, some of our trusted, trained adults are saying, this is too much, I'm out of here. And so, we need to make sure that we're keeping them as well, and salaries is one way to do it, and I think y'all have been committed to that. But, like, what I'd really like to know is, I get the classroom associates is, is popular, and, and that there are really strong things about that, and the consistency that comes with that, and the expertise that comes with that. But how, the data piece that I really want to know is, how many adults and how many classroom teachers are giving up their, in hours, how many classroom teachers are giving up their planning time to cover a class? And I, like, is that a piece of data that can be, not at this moment necessarily, but, but that is collected, and Mr. Brahm or somebody could share that with us? And if not, could we, like, going forward, make it a piece of data? Chair player, that I'd like for the school board to make sure that you, that nine of you have that piece of data to understand, not just that the substitute system that's in place is working well, but that teachers are getting their planning time, that is so important to little Johnny and to them. We've talked a lot about social, emotional learning. For students, it's important for adults, too. They are too, they're too stressed out. It, we, we, I hate to, we know that it impacts their interaction with students at times, and we, we want that interaction to be super positive and, and confident. So, back to my question, is that something that we can get? How many hours are teachers giving up covering other people's classes?
So, let me mention a few things. One, in fact, we administer surveys every year, sometimes multiple times, to every educator to glean their feedback. This particular survey surveyed about 1% of our educators. We want to make sure we're hearing from everyone about what's necessary and required. When a teacher is asked to cover something outside of their normal roles and responsibilities, we have what we call exception pay. We actually compensate our educators when that is the case. But not only the classroom associates, I also want to note that we've made significant investments, as also proposed in this budget, to continue to adopt high-quality instructional materials. Part of the feedback we received in years past was teachers were spending a lot of time trying to source materials and find the things that they need. This board is fully committed to fully adopting the curriculum that is proposed by our educators. I don't make that decision. That's a recommendation that comes to me by way of the review of our educators. So, that's just another example of what that looks like. We can speak to other, again, we talked about the social, emotional, and mental health supports. We're not asking our teachers to do that, we're asking our teachers to connect them with the experts and the, the specialists that are not only, they're not, they're not rotating across schools, they are dedicated to the schools that, that they're serving. So, we can go on and on about the Navigator Program. There are multiple efforts and strategies that have been implemented based upon that feedback and in collaboration with our educators, our 6,500 approximately educators that are serving across our school, certificated teachers, in addition to our support staff, to make sure that we're responding effectively and properly. But the, the measure there would be the exception pay model, which has reduced, because we have implemented the classroom associates. Now, you can never, you know, do enough in that space, and so, part of one of the aspirational budget items, investments, is to continue to reduce that number of what's required in enrollment of students to get to that ratio. And by way of that, because we're on track to meet or exceed our previous enrollment from years past, even pre-pandemic, we'll continue to have to adjust as we move forward.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. And that exception pay, is that exception? Exception pay, like, that's important, that they are recognized for what they're...
That's how we document when it's happening.
Okay, so, yeah, so if that's something that can be shared, and, and so, we're, so we're, so it's a little less anecdotal and a little more data-driven.
Absolutely, we follow it, follow it every day.
If that's something that can be shared with us, so we have a bit, an understanding, especially if you've been tracking it over multiple years, that would be really helpful. And to continue to make sure that these educators have the time, that money is good, this exception pay is good, but they also need the time, I think plenty of them need the time.
If I could get more time, I promise you I would. I run out of time every day.
I know, I know. I think that's mainly what I wanted to ask and cover. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Evans, you're recognized.
Thank you for recognizing me. I just wanted to know what the cost per pupil is on the promising scholars' summer programs?
We might have to calculate that and send it back.
Okay.
That's okay, not to waste too much time.
You're good, Councilmember Evans, okay? Councilmember Ellis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. So, I have two very specific questions. I'm gonna take advantage of the financial expert while he's here. What is the cumulative percentage pay increase for teachers and also non-teachers? So, no, you guys have it in steps and...
So, I'm looking at my, my colleague, so it comes, it comes close to 6%, I believe.
For teachers?
Let's see, if, 5%, 5%.
For te, for teachers?
Yeah.
What is it for non-teachers?
For non-teachers would be equivalent, because essentially, what we're proposing here is a 3% COLA, and then the step increase, it about another 2% on average, and, and that essentially in both teachers and support staff.
Let me explain the percentage increase for certificated staff. What we've proposed here is a step increase, which we know that average per year, we've proposed a 3% COLA, and our certificated staff, this outside of our operating budget, will also receive a $2,000 bonus this year by approval of our school board, as, that's connected to the new state law around vouchers. So, when you add all those together, that's about the percentage increase for this fiscal year. The, the bonus is non-recurring, but that's what cumulative, on average, it will be for this year.
Got it. Thank you. The second question and the last question is, what is the cost of the health insurance increase for both the teachers and also the non-teachers?
The total cost for employer, the total program is what we highlighted in the budget.
Yeah, and remind me, it was 75% that the employer covers?
75%, which is, yeah, is better than what happens in other districts in the state. So, 75% is covered by the employer, which for the increase that was approved by the Insurance Trust is 18 million. 13, 13, 13 million.
Do you have, by chance, a breakdown for the individual? Like, how much more are you paying per individual?
Not with me, but, you know, we, we can follow up with you.
Yeah, because I'm trying to see if the, like, what impact the health insurance increase would have on the pay increase?
So, I think, and one thing I want to note here, because we've been talking about feedback, so our benefits plan for our certificated staff is managed by several, several seats on the Insurance Trust are our educators, so they have to...
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt. Could you just clarify certified, certificated staff?
Certificated teachers are teachers who are licensed by the state of Tennessee to teach in our schools. So, they hold a professional license. And so, that, when we have those increases or those adjustments... Um, and so that, um, when we have those increases or those adjustments, these are all recommendations that come out of our insurance trust, um, which we have several of our educators who make that recommendation in collaboration with other experts to help them get, um, to their recommendation. So that's not just a standalone administration recommendation. Um, there's a couple of members from the school board who serve on that committee as well as our educators who come, who provide us with that proposal.
And there's two different insurance pools. We have our certificated insurance pool, which is like Dr. Battle described, and then we have a support staff, the non-certificated, that's under the metro government insurance plan. So there's two different insurance plans that are going simultaneously in our, in our district. So there's two different plans.
And retirees.
And retirees, so three. Okay. Did we confuse you some more? Need to do a little bit more homework.
This is why we don't have an immediate budget. Yes.
Got it. Okay. Yeah. Well, thank you for the context that you added and for the work that you all do.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Uh, I'm looking at Councilmember Allen. Thank you, Councilmember Ellis, but I was looking at Councilmember Allen. Um, and thank you again to Dr. Battle, to all of the school board members who have taken your time to, uh, join us here today. We really appreciate, uh, appreciate you all and appreciate all the work that you do. Um, the gains that MMPS has made is, um, very, very impressive and I, I second a lot of, uh, what we heard tonight. It is very hard to, um, transform students' lives and it's more than just throwing money at them. It's actually being there for those students and, um, just doing so much with the social, emotional learning as well as educating students. And you all are balancing it all. So thank you for everything that you do. I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Cash, I hear you. Um, I know that it is hard to look at a billion dollar, over billion dollar budget in, in two hours. So I do, uh, hear that and we can definitely look for ways that we can try to, uh, make improvements on this process, uh, also trying to honor the time of all the people that have to stay late to be with us. So thank you for that. And with that, again, thank you all for being here and our meeting is adjourned.